Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, July 8th. This proceeding is being broadcast on Channel 35. The next, the exact broadcast times can be found by contacting Channel 35. Board of Water and Power Commissioners, please say present for roll call. Commissioner Narit Katz.
Present.
President Richard Katz.
Present.
Commissioner Lehr.
Present.
Vice President McGraw.
Present.
Commissioner Pender.
Present.
Five commissioners present. A quorum is constituted. Mr. President?
Thank you, Shontay. Thank you and welcome everyone to this meeting of the Board of DWP Commissioners. Welcome you all and get into the agenda. According to the agenda, Narit, you're up for election of officers.
Yes, we are electing officers today and I'll make the opening motion for Richard Katz to continue as president of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right.
Shontay, have you called the roll?
Yes, if that's okay. All right, Commissioner Katz.
Present.
I'm sorry, aye.
Oh, oh, roll call for vote, aye.
President Katz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lehr.
Aye.
Vice President McGraw.
Aye.
Commissioner Pender.
Aye.
Five ayes unanimously, motion adopted.
Thank you, thank you all.
I do feel moved to say that I individually, and I probably speak for the other commissioners, we are pleased to have you continue to serve as our president. The conscientiousness that you bring to this, we all appreciate it. And we appreciate that you try to have a relaxed and somewhat humorous style, mannerism, because this is very important, what we do here. And there aren't many times, as we recently had with fires and we have floods and we have all kinds of things that go wrong. So while sometime it may seem that we strain to have a laugh, it is really to serve the whole citizens better, but it's also to keep us sane. And I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Willman. Since you're commenting, I'll also add my thanks. I know that the role of board president requires a significant amount of additional work to what we all put in as board members. And we're really grateful for your leadership and also the expertise that you bring and experience in the Assembly and other areas has been really helpful to the leadership of the board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that and I appreciate the comments and all of you and the hard work you put in. And I appreciate, let me also thank our staff and the great work they do along with everyone else at the department, who are committed to doing the best job possible for the people that live in LA, which isn't always an easy task, even on good days. It's not an easy task.
Yes.
But we greatly appreciate everybody who's donating their time and effort and making the city a better place to be. So with that, I'd like to also nominate George McGraw to continue as vice chair of the committee, of the commission, and make that nomination for our colleague.
Second.
Any other nominations? Anybody dare to put, no, any other nominations? Any objection, all members present being recorded as aye votes for George to continue as vice chair?
No objections.
So such will be the order. Congratulations.
Thank you for your service, Commissioner McGraw.
We'll keep going forward. All right. Okay, now back to the more mundane parts of running the department and doing all the other stuff. But thank you again to everybody. I mean, there is never a dull moment at LADWP, let's put it that way. But again, I am, I continue to be impressed and amazed with the dedication of the women and men at DWP, which is now, I think, close to 11,000 men and women. And day in and day out, people who do an amazing job for the city of Los Angeles and for all of us who live here and work here or play here. And they really are extraordinary individuals. And we saw it during the fires, we see it day in and day out, we see it during the recovery efforts. And we see it just about how people go about doing their business. And they do an incredible job under very difficult circumstances. And our lives are incredibly better for all of their efforts. So a big thank you and shout out to the women and men of LADWP as well. Thank you. So moving ahead. Public comments?
Yes, we do.
Sorry?
Thank you. I will open public comment at this time to the people providing public comment. When it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have two minutes per item, up to five minutes total. If you are speaking on a specific item, you must stay on topic. Otherwise, your time will be forfeited and it will revert to general public comment. If you would like to speak for public comment as well as a specific agenda item, you will have one additional minute on top of whatever time you have for your comments on the agenda item or items. The first speaker is Jamie, I'm sorry, Jaime Torrance.
Yes. Good morning. Jamie Torrance with LAUSD. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm speaking on item number four. And on behalf of Superintendent Carvalho and LAUSD Board, I'd like to thank LADWP for the ongoing collaboration and commitment to the students and to the LAUSD as a whole with the number of electrification, decarbonization, and energy efficiency programs that with your support we've been able to implement, excuse me, over the past 13 years. We've completed successfully 76 projects at schools to replace outdated fluorescent lighting with high efficiency LEDs, not only reducing our energy and carbon footprint, but also improving the educational environment for the students of LAUSD. So we're very thankful for that ongoing support and collaboration. This has resulted in over 22 million kilowatt hours a year that have been saved and almost $6 million a year that is available for students rather than for operating costs. So we're grateful for that. The district has invested thus far about $15 million into this program with the lion's share being invested by LADWP. Next, we've undertaken a number of projects to, pilot projects to assess feasibility of various conservation technologies in school settings. These include kitchen electrification pilot, rain systems for turf and water conservation, thermocote building envelope, insulation coatings. However, the most exciting part of our collaboration really is the education and awareness program, which we're very proud of. This, there are a couple of elements of this. One is the Empowered Schools Program, which teaches students about energy conservation as well as water stewardship. And we have 131 schools participating in this program. We've also, with your support, launched an aeroponics garden and other student-centric conservation programs at a number of schools. And finally, through the Heroes for Zero Contest, students learn about conservation, sustainability measures, and then submit videos on how to achieve energy savings. Over 200 schools of all grade levels participated on May 28th. We were glad to be supported by LADWP as we recognize the winners for this year. So really appreciate the collaboration and thank the LADWP Board as well as staff for this ongoing support. Thank you.
Before you step away, I didn't know myself until I was reading the summaries that we have. I didn't know that LAUSD is stated here to be our largest customer.
I believe so, yes.
So that's, that's pretty exciting. The simplest thing that we know about our relationship is when we have the contest for drawing the various pictures. And to see the range from the youngest student who can take the idea of what the program we're trying to put in place there of conservation, just how wonderful their minds are and all the posters we end up with and all of that. So you can see it's very vibrant. And of course, as you know, there are many other projects that we have with the unified school system. So it is a pleasure to have you have dressed us today and we are pleased with our relationship with the school district.
Thank you very much. For us, it's very important to see students start at young age and not only carry this out throughout their academic career with us, but also to take it home and remind their parents about conservation and environmental stewardships.
I remember even my grandchildren. Grandma, you have on too many lights in here. What's, why? Click, click, click. So it does filter down and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Me, Lehr, and I have four grandchildren. And I will, I'm sorry, I'm going to be the downer to here today. They all go to schools that have, are getting nothing. I'm there with a group of parents, and I've been doing this for decades under Vernon O'Treev, the teacher who eventually gave USC a lot of funding, the principal. I just think it's, it's, there is a little bit of sort of some gaps, obviously, in places. And so I will send you the names of those schools because it is, you know, asphalt, 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 with hundreds of kids and, and, you know, I just, I'm, I'm living it every day. And I was really, really excited, not only to be at Mr. O'Connor's sort of session in City Council, because this was discussed a lot. And so I always wonder, having met Mr. Carvalho numerous times, how choices are made, which schools are, you know, getting rebuilt or not, or where these programs are getting, sort of, where these gaps are and why.
Sure, I can address, make some general comments and be happy to take the names of the schools. But we have developed over the last couple of years a greening index that identifies where the schools with the greatest amount of asphalt and least amount of green space exist. And that is how we're prioritizing these projects. As you're aware, we, voters just approved a $9 billion bond referendum to improve schools. And a big chunk of that is dedicated to greening and to improving the environmental quality at our schools. So we are well aware there are many schools with very small green areas, a lot of asphalt, which is not conducive to outdoor play and recreation. So that is our priority. The ones that are highest on that list with the least amount of green space are being prioritized for projects.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'll add as well, support for that comment. I know we're jumping ahead a little bit as OPA will make comments later on, but in the analysis that we received from a ratepayer advocate, he did indicate a recommendation, which I agree with, which is that it would be helpful to have some annual report back on the process, selection of schools, et cetera. It's really good to hear that the greening index is being utilized. We definitely want to prioritize our most impacted communities, especially when it comes to extreme heat. I had the opportunity to attend an event recently where one of your schools, Esperanza Elementary, and Principal Brad Rumble were given an award for their work. And I just want to highlight how impactful the work at that school has been and that I hope to see a similar integration in addressing heat, but also addressing biodiversity and nature education and the city and LADWP's biodiversity commitments in these projects moving forward. And these greening schoolyard projects are so important. I just want to echo Commissioner Lehr's comments that we continue to move forward as much as possible with those types of projects that integrate shade and energy savings, but also this connection for our students with nature, because we've really seen what a big difference it makes for the students. And as a graduate of elementary, middle school, and high school in LAUSD, you know, I really can speak from experience as well in terms of what it means to go to these schools and then now to see some transformation happening across our region. It's really important work and we're really grateful for LAUSD's leadership on that. Thank you.
Other comments? I mean, thank you, we appreciate it. Give our best to the superintendent. And be sure to thank the teachers for us as well. But, you know, the one point, one of the points you made that we've seen before, you know, it was kids who got their parents to stop smoking in large numbers because of the education process that took place. And we're hoping to do the same thing with environmental education, greening, light bulbs that, you know, turning off lights or whatever it may be. But the kids are really the future in more ways than one. So we, you have a difficult, you have a difficult job. And we're very appreciative of all the work that goes in, particularly by the teachers and the administrators and, you know, and the faculty. And know it's a way to shape the future. We look forward to continuing to partner with you and do good things for the kids in the future and our city.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here.
The next speaker is Matthew DeBothe, who will be followed by Wayne.
Hello, my name's Matthew. I'm a civilian and LADWP customer in Venice Beach. I am here because I'm interested in decarbonization and the department's effort to encourage residential and commercial clients to use less, you know, bring down our utility usage. I'm curious if there's any subcommittees or what our efforts and goals will be over the next year or a few years. Thank you.
Do you, who would like to answer? We have a lot going on.
Your reader, Janice, you guys would probably have the best handle on a comprehensive view.
So we actually have our LA 100 community engagement plans. And Dave, do you want to talk a little bit about what we're doing there that talks about a lot of the energy efficiency and sustainability efforts we're doing on the power system and then on the water side? We have 70% local water. We also have biodiversity going on the department. We're looking at greening our facilities. I mean, I could go on and on and on.
I think specifically, correct me if I'm wrong, but are you asking mainly about incentives for residents to make these changes?
Yeah, what would encourage a, like, commercial customer to?
Yeah, commercial or residential customer incentive, some more like David Jaco's area.
Oh, well, we have David Jaco here, so.
Yeah, David, do you want to answer?
Can you come into the mic and talk about the amazing work that you're doing? Sorry, I didn't.
I just want to say thank you. Thanks for giving the education and for everyone watching on Channel 35. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down.
The next, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, just a high level of all the programs. Where they can find the information and how easy or hard it is to participate in our programs.
Yeah, I mean, we have a very robust portfolio of energy and cost-saving programs for all segments, residential, you know, for multifamily, single-family, condos, townhomes, low-income, people of, you know, of limited means, also people of means who can adopt more, you know, comprehensive-type retrofits. We have programs that are targeted for deep, comprehensive retrofits for low-income multifamilies, specifically our Comprehensive Affordable Multifamily Retrofits Program, which I hope to be presenting in more depth in a month or so to this board. And on the commercial side, we, again, we have a very comprehensive suite of retrofit and, you know, retrofit, direct install, and a new construction program for commercial that targets light commercial, mom-and-pop-type businesses, but also heavy industry, institutional-type facilities. LAUSD I'll be presenting on shortly is, would be kind of an institutional customer. But also, also hospitals, office buildings, the like. Our website, ladwp.com, has a full listing of the available offerings that we always refer customers to as a starting point. You can always, 1-800-DIAL-DWP is also a place to start. And then our larger customers who have account representation, that's certainly a resource that's available for large commercial customers to begin with as well.
Thank you so much. And my understanding is that includes not only incentives for energy efficiency and conservation, but also conversion away from gas-powered appliances towards electric, which is very much the decarbonization.
We have a number of building electrification measures that we're incorporating in our resource programs as well.
Yep. And then one other note, since decarbonization is not only stationary sources, but also mobile, we do also have a lot on the transportation electrification side. So there are rebates for EVs and EV chargers as well. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that we also have, at the website, it's ladwp.com/save, has all of our water conservation, energy efficiency. And we relaunched the Efficient Product Marketplace, where you can go online, look at various air conditioners or other devices that will help you save energy, save water. You can purchase those online, have them delivered directly to your home at a significant discount from the Efficient Product Marketplace.
Yeah, and one final thing I would add. We also maintain partnerships with a number of community-based organizations throughout the city, both at the council, district level, and citywide, that we partner with to get the word out about, you know, not just conservation and efficiency messaging in general, but also to promote our programs to our customers at the grassroots level.
Thank you, David. Don't go far. I'll see you in a couple of minutes on the rest of the program.
Thanks, Dave.
The last speaker is Wayne.
So it all started last December with a phone call.
Hi, good morning. This is Marissa, I'm calling from Los Angeles Department of Water and Power. The reason for our call is because we have, we have been notified that Mary Chelwick is deceased. And we cannot have the service in the name of a deceased person. We will be issuing an order to stop the services, all accounts under Mary Chelwick. So please call 1-800-342.
Okay, that's enough of that. All right, so they wanted me to change my name to the principal on the building I've been paying on for 22 years. I came here and did it. They wanted $300 of my money, so I paid it. So now we have, that wasn't enough. And a couple of months later, I get a bill, very strange bill, for $67 for the water. And then I get another one for $118 after that. Paid it. And then last month, you guys didn't mail me my bill. Well, I found out it was $1,524.22, which I paid it. Problem is, the whole time I've been taking screenshots of the actual meter readings. And you guys are about 100 cubic feet off, right? Okay. Now, you know, Mr. Katz, you know me a long time, right? You know why this is happening, right? Same bullshit again, right? So you see what this proves is that your lawsuit against PricewaterCoopers was completely fraudulent because there was no billing software problem by Pricewaterhouse. 2025, you're still billing people thousands of dollars more. But you see, you did the same thing to me in 2022. And you kept billing me over and over again fraudulently, month after month after month, for hundreds of dollars, until you finally got it down to $1,482. And I filed all these claims. And I got back letters saying you're going to investigate it, but you never did. Now, we have a inspector general report that came out, right? And you know Mr. Paul Paradis, by the way, he sends his love to all of you, Mr. Paradis. He's wishing all of you a happy fourth, you know. So why do I get today a call from Homeland Security in Washington DC? Apparently, I'm not living at my address according to utility records. The property's vacant according to their records. So I didn't get my client's mail as a result. So I had a little discussion with them this morning and I says, well, we're having a little bit of an issue. So hopefully, I know I got this thing, you know. So the bottom line is, let's just, when you add it all up, it's going to come up to about $4,000. I'm going to try to trouble damages for fraud. So I will take $10,000 to settle this. No questions asked. But I want an offer written. I want my bill to stop bleeding, because I bet it's going to happen again, right? And stop attacking me because of my business and because I go to City Hall and I have the nerve to speak to your council, okay? Because this is wrong. This is really bad, okay? Is when you're trying to do something like this and the whole time we're taking photographs, videos, okay? So I was going to do this last, next month, you know. But after I got this call today, you know, three hours ahead of time woke me up out of my sleep, I figured, you know what, I better come down here today and address this or I'm malfeasance if I don't, right? I go to council meetings, I complain about it, I call my council, nothing is done, right? So again, I've been damaged really bad here, you know. And I think this really needs to stop, don't you? And, you know, Pricewaterhouse, if you could please tell them that your building is still having a problem, because I'm sure it's just a glitch in the computer system, right? Yeah, see this? There's my meter. And there's the meter. But you see, the whole last night I took a photo. Well, you can't even see the meter. You can't, it's all kicked in. So they're not even reading it, right? How are you reading a meter? See? So you see, that's the game that DWP plays. That's the city game. So anyway, like I said, I was going to do this next month. You know, I'm sorry I got to blow the surprise, you know, over the reason. I was going to do it right after they came back from recess and go boom, 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 boom. So anyway, trouble damages. And I want my $25 meter reading guarantee. There's supposed to be a, when you don't read the meter, there's a $25 guarantee. You know, I never got that in 2022 for my seven fraudulent billings, you know. So let's get that. I want my $25. And let's hope that you guys will stop doing this to me. Because I hate coming down here and having to pay $1,542 and get a receipt when I know the bill is $0 to $12, right? Yeah. Any questions? No? No, that's great. Well, yeah, but good day.
You too. Thank you.
Commissioners, we can have a staff member from our customer relations office meet with Wayne in person or by phone to go through all of his issues. This is an escalated office where they handle more complex claims and challenges and problems with billing.
I assume you guys are familiar with Wayne?
Most likely.
Yeah. I think that would be helpful, except it sounds like there's a formal claim process, Ben, is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have a claims office as well that I can get the history and certainly give you a report back on this particular case.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Public comment is closed at this time.
CEO and chief engineer, Ms. Kionas.
Well, good morning. And I'm going to start talking about workday. We, I think that the next test after go-live in last board meeting was the first paycheck and that was this Monday. And I'm happy to report that we closed and released payroll. We processed 12,439 employees for regular payroll and 262 for disability payroll. The gross payroll was approximately $84 million, which was very close to the last payroll that we ran in the last system. And all the pens, 17,000, we went to zero as of this last week. So all the job changes that were prior to go-live have been completed in the system. And now all the changes that come in will be done in digital matters. So the patent process will no longer exist. It was a paper-based process. I would say that the go-live for this project, I've heard from city personnel, I've heard from consultants, and my own experience, this go-live was exceptional, a superior performance. We went and go-live with no critical errors. The amount of change management, employee training, and support, what's outstanding. But most importantly is a huge thank you to our employees to adopt this change and able to go into the tool, submit their time to their supervisors and managers to approve their time to our EAs, our utility administrators that worked tirelessly to make sure that organizations were accurate, the data was accurate in the system, and timekeepers, providing necessary audit and approval of the time. And then our payroll office conducting tests on time approved twice a day during the last two weeks to ensure that we didn't see any blatant errors or mistakes on the system and everything worked very well. It was a lot of hours for the team to get to this payroll because we want to make sure everybody got pay on the day and they were able to see their paychecks on the tool. And it was a beautiful thing to see my paycheck on workday on Thursday. And I'm pretty sure a lot of people were happy to see it. I also want to thank our labor partners, IBW and MEA, for raising issues and concerns that they have. So we were able to mitigate some of those and make sure that we were ready for deployment. And so I want to talk about our IT service request tickets. When we started the deployment in June 16, we had about 464 tickets come in a day. As of July 2nd, we have 68 tickets come in a day. We got two days where we had eight tickets. Yesterday, we had like 70 tickets because it was the first day after the holiday where people were seeing their paycheck. We had a total of 1,800 tickets and about 1,500 have been successfully closed. We have about 297 pending that we're currently working on and they continue to. and they continue to come through the week.
Those tickets are just related to the, to this rollout of Workday?
Yes, and that included training on time entry and approval, questions on payroll, human resources, how they're affiliated to the organization, security roles, and support were the main reason of the tickets. Nothing technical. It was a lot more on the change management and the things, how it impacts them personally. Training and change management, we had 148 live in-person support sessions, and we went to nine operational sites to ensure that we were supporting our field, including Trusdale, Cipollina Center, Van Nuys, Palmetto, Bishop, the Western Water District, the filtration plant, and the Haynes Generation Station. This is, like I mentioned, very successful Go Live, and I will attribute it to one thing, and that's ownership by everybody. The amount of close cross-functional team and work, all the leadership owning it, all the teams involved were all about getting this to go live in the best way possible, and everybody was centered on that one mission. And that's a big lesson learned, and we're doing a lesson learns and after-action report of this deployment so that we can leverage the best practices of this for future deployments, which we have more coming. As you know, we have FSO coming in next year. And then we have some other big deployments on HR, including the COLA changes and the TCRAs. So a lot more coming, and so that the team is taking a breather so we can continue to do the other things that we need to do on Workday. So let me stop there and see if you have any questions on Workday I have here. Anne, Tracy, and Norma, if you have more detailed questions.
Well, first, congratulations. That sounds tremendously successful. And we've heard good things from staff, too. I'm curious what the ongoing conversation with our labor partners is and how that's going. I'm also curious if Hypercare continues and how many people have taken advantage of those services here in the building and online. And sort of just an idea of, over the next few months as we run additional payrolls, what our plan is to either keep or scale down some of the tremendous support we have for employees now. Basically, how long do they have to take advantage of some of these opportunities to speak to a person right now in a moment to help them solve a payroll issue?
Yeah, and I'll bring Norma up, but I'll start answering. I know we have Hypercare in person until July 11. We can extend as much as possible. There's two big tests coming up. First, the last paycheck didn't include all deductions, so we have to run a payroll with all deductions, and we'll roll sure we see some ITSRs coming from that. And then the next one is, we're running a COLA upgrade for our load dispatchers this week, and that's going to be the first test of doing a massive change in pay. So those two are going to give us more information. We also have a library of resources that we've created through the change management process that's always available, and ITSR system will also be available. But I'll let you talk about the Hypercare and how long we're going to have them.
Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner, for your question. I think the relationship with our labor partners is stronger than ever, thanks to this exercise. We do have them approving testers and being integral part of all the activities that we have when we plan them and seeking their support. We have monthly meetings and regular meetings, but we have on-demand meetings, whatever, they need to talk to us and we need to talk to them. Hypercare will continue. We do have a team specialized in supporting whoever has questions or or there are some pending tickets, I'm sorry. It's been a long week. And we will continue for at least one more month. Now, the level of, as Janice explained, the level of tickets really, really went down very aggressively. Most of the tickets that she explained was about training and confusion in how to enter time, needing to understand the interface, what the data was, which is different than what they were used for 35 years. So I think we're in a good, in a good place. I expect that the platform will be stable in the next month or so. Did you answer your questions?
You did beautifully. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
And you, you have anything else?
We do have Hypercare. In addition to what we have right now, we have a contract with the Accenture team for one year afterwards, and that includes some of the people that have been with us since the last several years, programming the system, helping us to learn it. So that's a great thing. And the other thing is, all deductions are not taken on one check. So this next pay period will have healthcare deductions, and then the next one will have union dues. So it'll be a learning process, and every pay period will get better and better.
So we're, you know, 21 days create a habit, so we're working to it. The biggest change that we continue to hone in is our employees submitting time and our managers and supervisors approving time. And that's not a tool issue, it's a culture issue, right? So we got to continue to that change management. And so the next month is to ensure that our employees get used to the, I'm submitting the time and I'm approving the time on time. But overall, we are able to run reports. One of the things we were discussing yesterday is the new big, beautiful bill and how it's impacting our overtime policies. And if we didn't have Workday, that would have been a massive undertaking for us to change the payroll. And I think Anne can speak to it.
Yeah, Workday is excellent with complying with federal and state laws. So as we went through our testing, any differences, we were able to make sure that the Workday tool had the right deductions. So as the new tax laws get amended and put into place, Workday will do that programming with us to ensure that we have it correct. And that's a really great tool, because our other system was awesome, but it was, you know, it outlived its real life.
Absolutely.
If I might add one more cultural change to what Janice mentioned, which is the existence of the pans, which don't exist anymore. So one of the cultural changes is to make sure that people submit the change in some time, because before, people would send a pan, and the pan would be in some drawer for a while, but people will get paid anyways. Now, we need everybody just to think in advance and go through the approval process whenever there is an article, 33, or some other type of personal changes. That's a cultural change that we are facing as well, but we are getting ready for it.
Well, Janice, Anne, Norma, Tracy, everyone involved, keep up the good work. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're excited to hear more.
All right, and next I'll pass it over to Anselmo to talk about the water quality report and update on San Denis.
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I'll report on first the drinking water quality report. L.A. Water and Power recently released the annual customer confidence report, which we also know as the drinking water quality report, which we have to publish on a yearly basis. The report that was just published is for the 2024 calendar year. As typical, the 2024 report shows that there are no substances detected above the maximum contaminant level in our drinking water. So once again, LADWP's water quality is excellent. This report, like I said before, is an annual report, and we submitted to the California State Water Resources Control Board, specifically the Division of Drinking Water. It's basically considered like a report card as to the quality that we're providing of the water to our customers. The report, we actually sent a link to our customers on the 31st of last month, or 30th, sorry, of last month, with a regulatory deadline of notifying our customers by July 1. So we were able to meet that requirement. The report can be found online if you go to ladwp.com/waterqualityreport, all one word, waterqualityreport. And also, the customers can also request a print by calling our number at 1-800-DIAL-DWP. This report takes around six months to complete. So I do want to thank the groups who contributed to the report, obviously my water quality folks in regulatory affairs, also the water quality lab folks, communication, customer service, and also the print shop. So it is a collaborative effort amongst many groups, and I appreciate the great work that they do every year. So if you want to see it online, you can go on the website. We can provide you with a hard copy, but we're trying to minimize hard copies as much as possible. The other report is on the San Denis Reservoir. As I mentioned before, the reservoir was put back into service on June 25. We continue to put water into the reservoir. As of today, there's approximately 72 million gallons of water in the San Denis Reservoir. Our goal is to get around 76 million gallons of water in there, and then it'll go into the normal operation. So it's in service right now, it's on what we call inflow, water's coming into the reservoir. If the demands get really high, it can outflow, but it's set to fill the reservoir. Once you get to 76 million gallons, we will make system changes that would allow us to be able to draw water from the reservoir and at the same time, provide water to the eastern part of that service area using the trunk line, the Westgate trunk line. So it took a lot of work to get the reservoir to the point that we are today. The recovery fixing was a combined effort between LADWP staff as well as a contractor that was working on fixing it, and also a series of divers. We did need to use divers to go into the water to be able to find those pinhole leaks that you couldn't see when the reservoir was empty. So it took a big effort. I'm glad to report that we've been able to finally get it back in service and resuming normal operations. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Anselmo.
And now I'll pass it over to Dave to talk about our Palisades Community Town Hall and other updates on power.
Thank you, Janice. Good morning, Commissioners. So as you are aware, we've been doing a lot of community outreach in the Palisades area with various community groups, giving them information about the updates on our restoration or our recovery as we shift into the rebuilding efforts out there on both the power and the water side. We have had to move our utility, Unified Utility Recovery Operations Center. We've moved it down to the Topanga location so that we could accommodate the Palisades Recreation Center rebuild. So what we did on July 2 was, we started to have a public and community group outward-facing meeting as well to just inform everyone all at once. So we communicated with the mayor's office and Council District 11. Tracy Park was there with us on the call as well. We did it in the evening on Teams, or on Zoom, actually, and communicated our intentions to the public. It was myself, Anselmo Collins, Joe Romallo. We all kind of did a Q and A. We talked about the undergrounding efforts and the design and what the community is going to look like with our various options on undergrounding our equipment. We felt like it went really well. We had some good questions from the community. Our engineering groups put together some very good renderings that we shared about what to control the expectations of what it actually means when we say undergrounding, because there is still some equipment that will be above ground. We intend to do this on about a monthly basis, so we'll make sure the board is informed and invite you all to future meetings. Also, I'm very excited to announce that we have a power system priority initiatives. We just finalized this, yes, last week, and we now have our top 10 power system initiatives for the entire power system. We used a combination of the planning group, the various engineering groups. We kind of looked at impacts to the customer, impacts to the power system, using some lessons learned from what we did going through the heat wave last September and the Palisades emergency in January, and what we knew we needed to rely on in the face of that emergency. And all of that put together, we now have our top 10 priority list. Number one is, I can't tell you. I'll have to wait until we have a follow-up presentation for the board next meeting. But we are very excited to be rolling that out. We are going to make it public-facing with some summaries of projects, so people in the community that are interested can log on for more information. And last board meeting, Vice President McGraw asked about how our new power system concierge service was going to mesh with Project Powerhouse. So I'd like to invite Emile Abdel Shaheed, our Power New Business Director, to the podium to give you some more details about what we're doing and how those two projects will live in partnership.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Emile Abdel Shaheed, Director, Partner of Business. So the new business concierge service is going to basically start off with all our, what we would consider, complex projects that require some form of engineering. Project Powerhouse, about 99% of those projects fall into that group. We service about 4,200 of those complex projects a year, and we have about 420 Project Powerhouse projects. So those will be funneled through that concierge service. And essentially, it's to help guide the customer, help coordinate with the internal groups and with our own new business groups, and make sure things are progressing according to the customer's schedule, making sure things are communicated when there is an issue, when there is a delay, when we're waiting on customer information, et cetera. So we are looking at building about a group of about 23 utility service specialists. This includes entry-level leads, supervisors, and managers to help manage the whole effort. That's going to be where we start off, and we'll continue to expand as we need to.
Thanks for clarifying. That's great to hear.
Yes, thank you.
Emile, thank you for everything you and your group do. It makes a difference, and we all appreciate it, as do the customers.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I think this will be a huge, thank you, Emile. This will be a huge impact to the customers, to our ratepayers, to the developers, everybody that has to navigate our process. This is us changing our process for them to meet their needs and giving them a single point of contact. So we couldn't be more happy that this is happening. It's something that we've been working on for quite some time, and everything seems to be kind of landing all at the same time last week. They're finally coming together, so we're very excited to see the progress for the power system. That's it. Thank you.
People found our process intimidating or difficult to navigate, seriously?
I can neither confirm nor deny.
He is a nuclear engineer, so what's complicated to him is not complicated. What's complicated to us is not complicated to him.
The more complex, the better.
The other way around worried me.
That was worrying me, too.
Can you ask a question about the concierge project? Will there be any metrics developed over the course of the implementation of the program about the types of engineering projects that are most likely to be going through or needing help from the concierge?
You know, that's one of the things that we're looking at, is making data-driven decisions. And I don't know that that's a realm that we really lived in before. We kind of, we had the data, we had gut feel, we had experience, and we made decisions based on that. But now we're moving into an era where the public is expecting, you know, Domino's Pizza delivery, exact updates, and the Amazon of the world. And we've got to get on board and modernize with that. So we're going to be looking at hold times, wait times. If a customer submits a project, how long until we're actually implementing the design? On our estimating side of the house, whenever this does roll over to our new business construction groups, we do have some thumb rules and some estimates that we've established over the years on what we know it takes to build a project. I think the hangup is going to be the processing time, the design time, and the handoff time. That's where we're looking at improving efficiencies. A lot of time, the construction period has to do with our safety rules, and there's very strict requirements that we have to adhere to, as well as the design and the constructability. So I think we're looking at it from an efficiencies standpoint, and we're really going to be able to improve this whole process by just minimizing the handoffs.
And Tim, we have about 18 initiatives currently underway to improve the process, and some of those initiatives include dashboards with metrics that we're tracking, too. Now, your question of which project makes that into the concierge is the one that we have to define. And according to Emile, anything that needs engineering involved, so line extensions or something more complicated, goes through that. In my experience outside of public power, you have express connection versus long-term connections. And so I would say long-term connections will get the concierge versus the express connection, which is just connecting to the existing service line.
Thank you for reminding me of that. So Rajiv, our corporate performance chief, has put that group through a Kaizen event. We partnered with Local 18, identified the right people, put them in a room in January, and we went through the process step by step, design by design. And out of that came 19 recommendations to modernize, one of which is this concierge service along with the public-facing dashboard. That's something we were able to do on the water quality side during the Palisades real time because of our support from IT. So we want to do that now for our new business process, so customers can see where they are in the queue. It's all about transparency.
And I think it'll be good for you to see this presentation as well, so that if you have input, that would help us. Happy to take it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then now I'll pass it to Joe for our customer service update.
Yes, thank you, Janice, and good morning. I have two items today. First, I wanted to share good news. We have relaunched the Cool LA initiative, offering instant rebates of up to $275 on air conditioners for income-qualified customers. This year's increased rebates will continue to help our customers purchase energy-efficient window wall and portable air conditioners to help lower indoor temperatures to a safe level during extreme heat conditions. Our low-income and lifeline-qualified customers can purchase up to two AC units per customer through the Cool LA website. And that's ladwp.com/cool-la. It's part of the Efficient Product Marketplace that I mentioned earlier. What's wonderful about it is it's an instant rebate in the cart, so you don't have to worry about turning in paper, and we don't have to process paper on our side. It's all handled there on the platform. There are, from time to time, in the marketplace, available units that are $275 or less. So in that case, it would amount to a free air conditioner for those customers. This complements an initiative that we have with the Housing Authority of the City of L.A. to provide air conditioners for free for their residents, as well that they're in the process of installing. That initiative is approximately 2,000 air conditioners that's underway. I have an additional item because we get a lot of questions and concerns regarding our privacy policy and immigration enforcement and issues. And I know it's been a topic that, yes, I'm sorry.
Before you go off into that, which is a really critical issue, let me just stick with you on.
Cool L A.
I'm sorry, on Cool L A.
Thank you. Are we prepared to stand up the cooling stations and the various things we went through last summer, as I understand we're heading into a heat event this weekend to some extent? But are we in good shape for doing that moving forward?
We work with Rec and Parks and the mayor's office for their facilities to assist them when they open their cooling centers, including in promoting them. We're also currently working on getting them resources such as charging stations, ICE, et cetera, to support them during high heat events, and so that work is underway.
Do we know when those are going to be stood up, what the plan is at this point?
The cooling centers are activated by the city during heat events. I know last week they had said that they intended to open some, but I know that the weather forecast has possibly changed, so I don't have the latest at this moment, but I can certainly look into that.
Thanks, Joe. Appreciate that.
And it's bigger than customer service, right? So power has been doing a lot of work ahead of the heat wave, so has water with hydration stations, and it's a whole enterprise event, right? And based on last year's heat wave, we had a lot of lessons learned that we've been implementing, including help with the C A O and some of the logistic items that we know could support our customers better during, because we know we're going to have outages, especially if we don't get relief at night from temperatures. And so we've done infrastructure improvements, but we also are looking at other ways to support the whole system.
All right. Anything else, Joe?
Yes, I just wanted to add information about our privacy policy and also ways that we can help our customers who've been impacted. We know these are very difficult and uncertain times for many of our customers, especially for members of our immigrant communities. We want to assure all of our customers that L A D W P is committed to protecting their privacy and ensuring that their confidential account information stays secure. We do not collect information on customer immigration status. We'll never share private customer information with public agencies like ICE or Department of Homeland Security, except in the instance of a judicial warrant or judicial subpoena which would be signed by a judge. We do not recognize administrative subpoenas that have been the topic of news coverage more recently. Our mission is to improve everyday lives of all Angelenos. We don't participate in immigration enforcement actions, and we protect the privacy of all of our customers regardless of background or immigration status. We're also sharing information with our customer service centers, as well as with our facilities that we're working with H R on, to let them know about the city's protocols with respect to access of publicly accessible buildings, which our customer service centers are, and buildings that are not open to the public that would require someone to have a reason to be there. The process that the city has and the rules in place with guidance from the city attorney are different for those types of facilities, and we're taking care as well to offer online options for customers and for our community meetings so that they can be done virtually because we know that some of our customers unfortunately do not feel safe visiting or attending those events. We want our customers also to know that we're here to help. If you've not been able to work, if you fear visiting one of our customer service centers to pay your bill in person, or if your business was impacted financially by immigration enforcement, we have financial assistance programs available to help you. We want you to call us at 1-800-DAL-DW P. We can enroll you in payment plans or arrangements. We can also, you can also do so online on your account, or someone can assist you in doing that via a phone call to us, or if you have a family member who handles your billing with D W P, they can assist as well, or we can assist them. We also offer payment extensions and level pay because we know this is a difficult time, and so many of our customers have been financially impacted in their ability to work or in the ability to open or run their business. We also have level pay, which is a great way to steady your billing amount throughout the year. And we've had some discussions as well, I know with Commissioner Anirita Katz, who had expressed concern and reached out. We're going to be sharing this information with our customer service representatives and service center staff because they get calls and questions. We're going to post this information at our customer service centers as well. We will be taking out multilingual advertisements with this message, social media posts, sharing it in community newsletters and with our neighborhood councils, and also working with some third-party CBOs, community-based organizations, who have those relationships in the community of trust, can help us get the word out about the ways that we're here to help and that we want to help make this a more manageable time for anybody thinking about their utility bill when they're worrying about their families and their lives and their well-being. So thank you.
I'm almost breathless hearing that report. It's so comprehensive, and quite honestly, I did not realize how much this current climate, you know, was actually impacting our customer base, and they're not even wanting to come into a local place to pay their bills and the whole business. So as you said, we have made, we are making and have made an effort to make sure the policies and the ideas you just expressed are widely known. Is that correct?
Yes, and we also had a request from the mayor's office and from various council offices that will share this with them because they are also sources of information to help get that the word out about how we're in a position to be understanding, and it helps when people are managing this really difficult time. I've also heard from our customer service center staff, they had an all-hands meeting a week ago Saturday, and they've been getting these questions from customers, and they've also seen an impact on traffic at our customer service centers, which is down as a result of the fear in our community.
So our income actually from our base is also affected by this. There's a downturn in the income that comes into D W P, correct?
We haven't seen direct evidence of it, but they have noted reduced, you know, visits to the customer service center. People may be finding other ways to pay. We just want them to understand it, and we can certainly track that together with F S O. I haven't seen anything directly impacting revenue yet, but that could that could happen. I don't know that it will amount to a great deal. In many cases, these are customers whose bills aren't typically large to begin with from our standpoint, right? From a revenue standpoint, but we can monitor it.
Customers can auto-pay, so they don't have to come to the branch to pay. The majority of our payments come in electronically.
Well, I commend you on those efforts. It's really quite, quite a bit. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for that report.
I am very aware of sort of how people are suffering, the fear they're living with, and we just learned this week that the Boyle Heights Post Office 90133 is being closed. It happens to impact my business because that's how I get, that's the, you know, that's our zip code. So I was, I'm trying to figure out what it really means, but if that's one, something that's going to be happening where a few post offices are going to be closed, and not everybody's comfortable paying or working digitally, so something to, I'm sure you'll find out more.
Yeah, our customer service centers are really a tremendous resource for our customers, and most utilities have closed them or are in the process of closing them. They're very valuable to our customers, and they're a great way for them to interact with us. It's a great experience for our customer service representatives as well to really serve the community because they offer more than just a place to pay your bill. They're resources as well for our customers.
Yeah, thank you very much for that comprehensive report on everything the department is doing. This is a challenging time for many of our communities, and it's often our most vulnerable members of the community who are being impacted, so really appreciate the detailed report. Thank you.
And the fact that we're being, the department's proactive in this, not reactive, but proactive and trying to help people get ahead and at least maintain during these difficult times. You know, the increasing number of reports of people who are not leaving their apartment or their house because they're afraid to go out, and it's horrible, and it's tough on on communities that are vulnerable to start with. And, you know, keep up the good work, Joe, whatever, you know, whatever you need, let us know, and, you know, we'll back you up however we can.
Thank you. I will.
You know, Janice, these ICE enforcement actions, and I'm sure you saw all the crazy militarization happening in MacArthur Park over the last couple of days, are probably not just affecting our customers, they're also affecting our employees, families, and friends, and I'm wondering, you know, what we've been doing internally to support our folks as they work through this really difficult time because they may need additional time to support family members, for instance, who can't leave the house or who need things like food or resources.
Yeah, we actually had that discussion yesterday, executive leadership team, on now that we got our customers figure out, how do we figure out, how do we support our coworkers? So Tracy has that actual item to look at other options, but probably very similar to what we do during the Palisades, that kind of level of support that we did for our employees, but we'll report back when we get a full, full list of things that we're going to do. I also want to encourage our customers, especially since you're spending more time in your houses and we're getting into the heat wave season, to take advantage of our Cool L A program because then they can get a free air conditioning unit and be delivered to your house through that, through the marketplace. And if not, if you have any other ideas that we can be more flexible for our customers, we're welcome to hear them, too, because we're trying to stay ahead of it, but there's stuff that we don't know, so we need to know what's what's impacting our customers so that we can mitigate and deploy other services in the city as well.
Great.
All right. And so two more updates, and then I'm done. L A 100 Plan Community Meetings, in June, we conducted four of them. We had over 100 community members, including environmental organizations, CBOs, neighborhood council members, attending the meeting. Everybody was engaged. This is to discuss our L A 100 Plans, which is getting to 2035 with 100% clean energy. And so the plan is, was updated this year, is on our website, and I encourage everybody to read it. It's important that the community is informed, transparency of what we're trying to do and how we're going to get there and the progress we made so far, and we value the input of all stakeholders in that process. And then the last thing, it's July 10th, it's our National Line Worker Appreciation Day. And as you know, as a power utility, our line workers are really the heartbeat of what we do, and they are responding to wildfires, storms, outages in the middle of the night, and and people don't know how important it is to have power until you don't have it, and you can't get it back unless you have one of them. And and my whole experience with line workers, the pride they have on their trade and how much they care about serving their communities, so I just want to congratulate them. On this anniversary date is also the day that we honor the memory of Henry Miller, which was the I B W founder who lost a life on that, on this day. So to our line workers out there, congratulations, we're very proud of you, and we're happy to have you in our, in our department. Dave, do you want to say more?
I mean, we love to brag about linemen. I know I have one in the audience, or I have two. Mr. Wilber, please give yourself a round of applause. Brian Wilber is, it's interesting to hang around with the Line Series because they love what they do. Their families love what they do. I think you come to the linemen's rodeo, the line workers rodeo, and you see it's just this pride that runs generationally deep through the entire community. They're so happy to do what they do on a, on a daily basis, and it's a tough job. There's those of us that work on the ground in the substations. We don't have a national appreciation day, but we won't even tell you the swear words that they use to call us names while we're out there all working together, but we have to have linemen, so. We do, we're very proud of the community that we have and the line workers that are highly trained through our partnership with I B W Local 18. We've got our own in-house training program, as you're aware, and it's a robust training program. It's the best in the industry as far as we're concerned.
And it also, it's also heavily safety-focused.
Yes.
Linemen in particular, but, you know, our linemen work hot, which means there's still power in those lines when, you know, when they're doing their magic, and so the men and women who do those jobs are extraordinary.
Yes, that's a great point about working hot, and and when we're looking at modernizing our distribution system, we were going to pilot that in the valley, but we're targeting that in Palisades now, and we're going to be moving to a 12,000 volts Y system instead of delta. So some of that hot work will go away in that area, but you're right, on a daily basis, these folks are gloving up in safety gear, and not only are they working high-voltage electricity, they have to climb to the top of an 80-foot pole and then start to work high voltage. Right.
And when we talk about hot, we're not talking about the temperature outdoors, which is hot, but the fact that the wires are live.
That's correct, so energized, to use the right, the right terminology. Anything, Brian, you want to chime in? I'm Brian Wilber-trained.
I just want, I want to sort of, it's a short story that when people know that I'm on the commission, there are several fine restaurants, including Manuelas Downtown, where I've been approached by some of the people serving food, is how can we get an interview to become a lineman? And actually, two of them have.
Oh, that's great.
Gone through the process. I mean, I just told them to connect with a couple of people at D W P, and it happened, but it was pretty, it's pretty special.
That's one of the things we're really proud of in the last few years, is our recruitment has become something that we actually have. We do have the Hayden Online Course or the Introduction to Electricity course that we sponsor through the L A Trade Tech College, and it's a good qualification to take a self-paced class at home, and then you qualify for up to six or seven different bulletins. You can get into the department, and then you can start going on Wednesday nights at your own time and get your climbing certificate out at the Truesdale Training Center, and then you, too, could become a lineman or line worker.
And we need more.
And we need more.
So we will be continuing to hire linemen if you're interested, definitely look into those options because we need to hire a lot more.
Yeah, it's a great trade. It reminds me of working with the United States Marine Corps, same mentality.
And that's all I have.
That's it?
You want more?
If you've got more, we want it, but if not, we'll move on. All right, next up.
Hello.
A rapier advocate.
Hello, Commissioners, members of the public. So I'll be presenting on three items today before the board. Before I do, just an update on the Office of Public Accountability Rapier Advocate. We have continued the process of recruiting and staffing up. We have an accepted offer for a deputy director of our office, and we'll be bringing that person on in about two weeks. We have been active in recruitment and have lines of sight into additional members to get this office moving, to become a model rapier advocate organization for L A D W P and to provide the types of public accountability and oversight and transparency that the public expects. So that being said, we'll be talking about items 01, 04, and 05. I provided the Commissioners, and I believe it's on the website, comment letter on these items yesterday evening. The first item is around metrics and targets for the board and evaluation of the utility's progress over time against those. These targets are important because they can provide an opportunity to evaluate how the utility is performing over time against a series of evaluative criteria that can help to understand, you know, the overall performance of the utility. When you look at the report that was just sent over to the Office of Public Accountability on July 1st, you can see that nearly one-third of the current targets are out of alignment with where you would expect the utility to be, as in there's a significant variance from the target that the utility has set. Now, that would indicate a problem of the utility, but that doesn't necessarily, in our mind, mean that that is the case. In fact, I think what it means is that it is important to take a look at the targets themselves, where they are set, how they are set, how they originally come to be, and how they are adjusted over time. I think that it is important, given this period of transition in the Rapier Advocates Office, for a fresh look at those targets to be, to be set. Now, just because you're out of alignment with targets doesn't mean you should change them to become in alignment. It means that you need to ask yourself, why are these, why are these in place? The original targets grew out of the, some of the I E A survey back from 2015, so we're looking at a series of metrics that were created roughly 10 years ago, and a lot has changed in that, in that period. At the same time, you know, there is, you know, there are some things that are still the same, and so many targets probably are still highly relevant, but I believe that if this series of targets is meant to give some situational awareness of the utility, that it needs to be evaluated in that, in that context. Now, that being said, there's some examples of, you know, targets and their, and their, and the utility's lack of alignment with them, which are a little bit concerning. You know, and for example, you can look at targets for things like pole replacement, where there was significant underperformance against the target based on the most recent reports. And when you look at next year's proposed target, you see an increase of about 10% or even more than 10% from the existing target, which is proposed for the next year. And so there's a question about how, how that, that increase in the target, you know, came to be. In meeting with In meeting with the department staff, uh, the, uh, that, that sets the, or the reports out on the targets, there seems to be, uh, you know, somewhat of a disconnection, um, between the, the performance reporting and the target-setting process, which indicates that there would likely need to be more alignment between those that are generating the report and the progress and those that are setting the targets to ensure that there's an integration, uh, between the departments, um, at the utility that are engaging in this effort. You can also see, uh, similarly, when you look at another critical infrastructure area, transformer replacements, the department exceeded expectations in transformer replacements by over 30%, but the target only increased by 3%. So in an area of underperformance, we've increased the target by more than 10. In an area of overperformance, we've only increased the target by 3. So there seems to be some disconnection in, in this, in this process. Similarly, I'll just give one more example. Uh, the report indicates that the, uh, the expenditures on, on staff and salaries is in alignment with the, with the target. However, this doesn't tell the full picture because there is significant savings associated with, uh, with regular salaries, but we have an, uh, an excess of overtime, uh, by more than 70%. And so if you look at solely just the target of whether we're expending or whether the utility is meeting its expenditures as expected, uh, you wouldn't get the full picture. You, you do start to see an erosion of those savings, uh, because of, of overtime, and this tells even a broader, a broader story. And that's when you look at the, as a collection, you could see metrics on things like recruitment, training costs, uh, matriculation in training programs as, as underperforming, and then you also look at overtime costs as increasing, and you can start to get a more holistic picture that the utility has a, a trend that OPA has, has raised in the past, that it needs more staff, um, it needs more, more trained people, uh, as, as, uh, as Janice just raised, um, the hiring is in, uh, is in process, uh, and that for this energy transition and for continued reliability, uh, the utility needs to continue and even in some cases probably step up that process in order to maintain some of the, the cost savings and reliability that's needed. So OPA is, is, uh, ready, willing, and able to stand, uh, with the utility as it reevaluates these metrics, make sure that it tells the story, um, of the utility's performance, make sure that they're relevant, uh, because there's nothing like spending a lot of time on a series of reports that don't, uh, generate the insight and outcome that they're intended for, because that's just wasted effort and out of alignment with what ratepayers would expect. So before I jump onto the next agenda item, I'll stop there on this, uh, this report and see if there's any questions.
Well, I don't have a question, and I very much, by the way, appreciated meeting you initially. I can see you are going to be, um, certainly equal for the task that we have facing us. I was scribbling a bullseye while you were speaking, as you did use the word target. And the arrow, which I have here, I've labeled DWP. Now, DWP, as you can tell from the history of it, from every remark we make, our arrows and efforts are always aimed at the target. Your job, of course, as our advocate, is to certainly get us to the bullseye. But the bullseye, in this case, is, really vibrates and it changes. It's not even constant. So I can assure you that this board, its workers, the entire industry, because you, you are the person that's looking at us with a critical eye, we're always aiming and we're always hitting this target. We never miss this target. And the target to us is our most unified effort and concentration and intellect all we bring. And I'm saying this to you as the advocate. We know what the target is, we know what the bullseye is. Hitting a bullseye even is, is very difficult, but we're always aiming toward that. I can almost assure you that the commission, the people of DWP who work here, we never miss the target, which is service and bringing in the best cost efficiency that we can. I just wanted you, as our new rate advocate, to understand, we know what the target is, we know what the effort is, and all of these things that we're signing off on are arrows in our quiver to see that that gets done. I can assure you that I, as one of these commissioners, I'm always mindful of this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. And, and the delivery of safe, reliable, affordable energy and water for the people of Los Angeles is indeed the, the mission, you know, of this utility and of other utilities, uh, across the, the landscape. The establishment of individual metrics, um, that can identify how the utility is doing with respect to, uh, delivering on that goal is, I believe, the core of this, uh, of this process in terms of these, these targets and metrics. Um, and we think it's important that in order to be able to understand the, the progress towards that ultimate goal, that the metrics of measurement, um, be in alignment with, uh, that trajectory.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Connor, do you have a, a suggestion as to when you'd like to see this midterm review happen?
I, I think that, uh, you know, the, the, the ordinance suggests that, uh, the review, not just of the, the levels of the targets, but the actual targets themselves, you know, is a process that should be undertaken. It's, it's written in, in the ordinance. And so, but I do think it's, it's something that you don't want to necessarily rush. I would recommend that a process be started, uh, soon, uh, that OPA be a part of that, and that I would imagine it's, it's not going to be that slow, but I think that it is advisable within, uh, at mid-year, um, from now, between now and the next, next report, that there be completion of that so that the department has the ability to, to, to do that. So I think it's a six-month, um, effort, uh, that would probably need to start, um, pretty soon.
Any more questions?
No.
But we do need to coordinate between, with Janice and the ratepayer advocate.
So I actually agree with Tim 100%. Um, I think the KPIs that are in this report are decouple from our goals and are decouple from our risk framework, and they're decouple from our budget. And so one of the things that we're working on is putting what Dave mentioned, our top 10 priorities based on our goals and our outcomes, right? And then from there, you develop KPIs. This, there's over 40-some KPIs on this list that might or might not be useful for us to execute optimal performance, right? Like Commissioner Pinder say, we're always targeting to hit the bullseye. What, uh, Tim is saying, how do we do that optimally? And so we have to work with OPA and our programs and our prioritization list, our risk framework and our budget to ensure that all of that is aligned and that we're measuring continuous performance and continuous improvement performance in our KPS year after year. And so that's the work we're doing now for our, our strategic plan and then tie it all together. So it's a holistic story.
I agree. I mean, I, I think that alignment will be really wonderful, and having the OPA's assistance in monitoring that process and making suggestions will be helpful. I do want to just point out, though, that I have seen the sort of same trend that Mr. O'Connor has seen since I've been at this DAIS, which is that, you know, the department does incredible work, and we're often bad at setting ambitious goals because we want to set, we, what we believe are realistic goals and knock them out of the park. We often do knock those out of the park, but they don't result in an adjustment of the goal to something that may be more realistic, um, or even more ambitious to push us, to push us forward, um, with the exception, I think, of some of our transformative goals around, you know, clean energy and, um, local water, um, which could really use, in this alignment process, um, some enterprise-wide goals that level up to those big transformative goals that we're all anticipating. And I don't think that those two processes have been trued up either.
That's what we're working on now. That's to put stretch goals and making sure that we push performance through it. Um, it, it's a, it's definitely something that is, it's a constant target, right? It's not just a one-year effort. So we'll do a mid-year review, we do a year-end review, we adjust the goals, and that process hasn't happened in the, in the history since I've been here, I don't know, before me. Uh, but it's something that we're working on so that everybody in the department knows what is the target, what is the stretch goal, and how we're all swimming in the same directions.
Okay. So for Ben, when we pass this, or if we pass this today, we can just make a verbal amendment to require a midterm review and, with the assistance of the OPA? Great.
Good. Thank you. On the next agenda item, item 04, this is around the L.A. Unified School District Program. And I appreciate the, the comments, um, from the, the school district earlier today. This is obviously a program that is designed to accomplish many goals. Um, and you can look at, of course, the utility's history and commercial direct install, and to show that this is, this is a, a type of area that, that the, of investment, of engagement with its customers, that the utility has been, has been performing for a long time. And when you look at what L.A. USD represents, which is, of course, a, a very large customer, but also an impactful area to engage, to educate, to, to reduce energy and water, um, you can see why, uh, this program, you know, is important. However, what we do see is that over the life of the program, there's been significant expenditure, um, by the part of the utility. Um, and those expenditures for energy savings are generally higher, uh, than you would expect in, in, uh, for example, the commercial install program, or when customers are installing, um, these projects themselves for, for energy savings, for example. Uh, and when you look at over the life of the program, you actually see between 2015 and 2020, um, and 2020 to 2025, an increase in the cost, uh, per unit of savings in the program. So the, the lower hanging fruit possibly are, are being, uh, sought after, um, early on in the program, and now we're seeing more and more expensive. Uh, the initial indication was that the forecast for this period would be also even higher than the last period, although speaking with staff, uh, seems to indicate that there are some forecasted savings, uh, that might be possible through better contract management, through better, uh, work, um, with the schools, as well as, uh, the different project types that are going to be available. And so that, this increasing cost and the size of the cost compared to others doesn't mean that we shouldn't pursue this program. I think it just means that there needs to be, um, tighter alignment and reporting and coordination between the utility and the school district, um, and probably the, and, and labor, and the project developers, project managers, to ensure that that happens. Um, the reason is because when we've done a cursory look at the projects that USD has selected, uh, we didn't see the same, uh, the same results that the gentleman from the school board, uh, reported as it relates to the use, for example, of the Green School Yards Index as being the guiding light for this. And so the question about whether this program is delivering on the, you know, the, the lowest hanging fruit and the most impactful fruit is, remains a question. Um, for example, the, of the top three schools, uh, in the Green Schools Index, which is a, an amalgamation of disadvantaged community and heat-stressed scores, uh, only one of those top three schools, uh, did receive, uh, project, um, investment in the last 10 years, as, as demonstrated by the report outs from the, the team, which would indicate that at least two of the schools, uh, in the top three, uh, may not have received the types of benefits, um, that this program, uh, may possibly deliver. Now, there may be some reasons, you know, for that. Uh, generally, schools, uh, that have less resources, uh, to, for their students and for, uh, for, you know, running their facilities, will have less resources to identify savings within those schools themselves. And therefore, them that have the least often get the least because of these, these processes. I understand that the program itself does provide some opportunities to help to evaluate and to train L.A. USD, um, staff to identify these types of projects, but when you look at also the heat-stressed, uh, schools, I believe zero out of the top 10, uh, that were listed on the, uh, the Green Schools Index for, for those school yards that had, uh, green space, uh, received, uh, any of the, um, the project funds. So I would, um, request, uh, that in the approval, if the, if it is so deemed, that there be a direction, uh, to the board, or, but from the board to the staff, um, to have, um, some report back, uh, to the board about the, the level of collaboration, um, between USD and, and the utility. Staff indicates that there has been less than optimal collaboration in terms of report back, as well as less than optimal visibility into the project selection process by USD in terms of what's proposed to be pursued for, um, insofar as, I believe, uh, there has been none. Um, and so I would recommend, uh, that that be a part of this process, um, as well as, uh, an identification of how the schools in the, in the, um, Green School Yards Index, uh, are being pursued and, uh, where those investments are going. I think this is a very important program, and I would recommend, uh, that the, the department continue to move forward with it, um, with some caveats. Thank you.
Rather than respond directly right now, I'm going to wait till we get David up here on the next item, talking about specifically this program, so we can integrate it in all at once. I don't want, I'm not
Totally.
pushing it off, I just, for a couple of minutes.
Yep. And then finally, on item, uh, oh, dot five, uh, for transitioning, uh, water system revenue bonds, uh, we have met with, uh, the team over, uh, you know, under Ms. Santilli, um, have, have reviewed, uh, the proposals for moving variable rate debt into non-variable rate and do find it to be in alignment with, uh, ratepayer interests, uh, because of the effects of lowering utility risk, uh, reducing financial, uh, volatility, improving credit considerations, uh, going forward. And so would, would, uh, agree, um, with item oh, dot five, with no modifications. We focus on this one, of course, because it's the highest dollar item on the, on the agenda, um, and think it's important, it is alignment with past efforts to transition variable rate to fixed rate. Uh, and so I think this is a well-worn path and one that the utility, uh, likely needs, especially as it considers, uh, forward-looking expenditures that are to be needed from, you know, several, uh, competing factors, uh, that are going to be faced, uh, the utility's going to be facing going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay. Continuing to move forward, um, we're going to go to the black items now, so that's why I said, I'm just quoting it for a short time, like minutes. Couple things. One is, item two has been deferred. Can I tell you right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, zero, on, we're on, and, and 0.3 will be special and 0.4 will be special, um, as with number seven.
And with your, uh, per, uh, permission, I think we'll call number one special so that we can make that adjustment to the language per the OPA's request?
Right.
Okay.
And number one.
In that case, I move to approve items, um, oh,
Numbers left.
Yeah. Five, six, eight, and nine.
Second.
Motion, and a second. Five, five, six, eight, and nine.
Motion adopted.
Without objection, by present, motion adopted. Okay, so now let's go back through
Okay.
the others. Um, okay, let's start with one, item one. Do you want to add to that?
I'm ready to go. I, you want to pass that, to make a motion now for that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I, uh, move to adopt item oh, one, um, but, uh, move to amend it verbally that we require the department to engage with the OPA in a midterm evaluation process of, um, both the metrics and the goals, um, and to bring the board a report on that midterm process, um, before we, um, reauthorize that a year from now.
A year from now?
We'll do the, they'll do the midterm process now, but we'll reauthorize this in a year, so.
Right.
I second that off, our amendment.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, 0.1, as amended? And motion and a second, all members present, as high votes. Such shall be the order. Okay.
All right.
Item two's been deferred. Item three.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I'll go ahead and call up, um, Tino Reynoso, um, the director of Real Estate. He's off on vacation, so he's filling in. Be glad to do the presentation for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Please have her look this one.
Good morning, good morning, board members and executive management. Uh, my name is Tino Reynoso. I'm a property manager, uh, in behalf of our director, Adriana Rubacava, who is on vacation. Um, I can try to assist you with any questions you may have regarding this item.
Okay. So did you guys have questions, or would you like them to go through the presentation?
Just go through the presentation, please.
Sure.
So basically, what's going on with this, with this, uh, item here is, there was an easement that was that was in favor of the department back in the 1940s for a public utility easement for a power system. Since then, from what I understand, the the easement wasn't used by the department, and it basically clouded the tight one on the property. As the developer requested to develop the property, he found that this easement was in place and was asking for the department to quick claim this easement. It went through its process. It had power system take a look at it, review if the current use and future use of the easement. It was determined that power system was not going to use the easement and didn't need the easement. Therefore, we went ahead and approved the quick claim. Part of the quick claim process, we are here with for your consideration to review and approve the the motion to to move forward. If so, then we'll go ahead and and approve that quick claim. It's gone through the city council. They approved it, and and now we're here.
Comments? Anybody?
Nothing.
Looks good to me.
No.
We have a motion and a second.
I move. I move.
Second.
Without objection, all members present. That that item passes.
Thank you.
We're on item four.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four looks like David Chaco.
You want to write it on the record?
Right. Thank you.
Is the recusal reflected on the record?
Yes. David, I think we know the program. Familiar with it. If you want to just give us a highlight, you know, high level overview, and then maybe address the ratepayer advocates comments, and we'll go from there.
Sure. Specifically, David, if you don't mind, in your presentation, helping us understand a little bit better what Mr. O'Connor is describing around sort of the minimal participation, maybe lack of participation in site selection, and what we might hope for that process going forward, it'd be helpful to know your background on that in your presentation.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Let me I'll give a real brief, high level on it, and we'll jump right into that.
Thank you.
So good morning. Afternoon, is it? No.
Twenty more minutes.
I'm David Chaco, Director of Distributed Energy Solutions, here to present on securing a resilient and sustainable future for our kids program. Real high level here. So we're proposing a new MOU that runs for four and a half years, from October 27th of 2025 to April 26th of 2030. This one would be $100 million total. That's it's four and a half years. So years one through four run 22 and a half million per year with a closeout year that's half a year for 10 million, the breakout of which across those years, the 80 million in direct install is that is allocated at 18 million a year, years one through four, 8 million in year five. And then the other prongs, which we can talk to in as little or as much detail, are water conservation for 5 million across the five years, broken out this way, education and awareness, 5 million for the four and a four and a half years, I'm sorry, broken out this way, and then a greening and resilience component for 10 million across the four and a half years, broken out this way. These are all up to amounts. I do want to stress that before we we dive into the ratepayer advocates questions and comments. These are all up to. These are up to amounts. At no point do we transfer any of these total up to amounts to LAUSD, especially, you know, but this is this is something where, as projects get done, we pay for them. The the water conservation, education, awareness, greening, and climate resilience projects are all agreed to in advance. So the process there is that LA Unified will propose a project to us according to the terms of the MOU. We will jointly review it. We will analyze it, and we will decide whether it's something that is of interest to us as well. Sports are our mutual understanding of the benefit of the program, and then we'll sign off on it. And then LAUSD will go pursue the project up to the amount that we've agreed to support it, which is not the 5 million. It's a subset of that. It's a budget associated with that particular project, like a task order, like a task order in a contract. So that is the way that's the way that works. I just want to kind of give you some some mechanics of it.
Can I ask a quick clarifying question? I noticed that direct install is particularly end heavy, last year heavy. Is that because it takes time for these projects to be planned? Or is there a reason there's so much more funding planned for the fifth year as opposed to years one through four?
Well, it's actually the fifth year is 8 million.
So.
And it's it's 18 million per year.
Oh, it's the 18 million per year. Sorry, I was reading that as total for years one through four. Thank you for clarifying. That's perfect.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got a well-oiled machine that's that's ready to to get moving. And that's one other one other thing I wanted to cover, just in terms of who does the work and where that money's coming from. This is not new money. This is money that's already in the commercial direct install contract this board approved back in February. The work is performed through that Willdan contract, and it's performed by Local 11 IBW contractors. That is in accordance with our PLA and also with Los Angeles Unified's PLA. So it's not new money. What it's basically doing is carving out a portion of the CDI contract specifically to serve Los Angeles Unified. And that's why this is a four and a half year MOU, because we're already pretty much half a year into the Willdan contract. So that way, we have more of a synchronized, coterminous overlap between the MOU and the underlying contract that serves the MOU. That just keeps the workflow more more consistent. So that's that's the high level. And with that, I can start to speak to the ratepayer advocates' specific, specific concerns about the program. Which were? I'm kidding. So but do, you know, feel free to to reiterate, because I'll I'll miss I'll miss, you know, something. So in terms of of how we, you know, how we've chosen schools and how they align with the needs of of schools, one thing I want to stress is that the direct install component of this program is is really separate from the other three. The other three, especially the education awareness and the greening and climate resilience, those those are pilots. They're they're one offs, or two offs, or five offs, or 10 offs, but they get school sites. And there's a selection process that LAUSD works there in terms of of how they choose schools. I think the the green ratings, the green index probably comes more into play there. The direct install component is is much more agnostic on that because it's simply lighting and controls. So the climate zone doesn't really matter. The socioeconomics don't really matter. What does matter is the amount of energy savings opportunity, the lighting opportunity. But beyond that, another factor is we're serving elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. And well, the high schools are the biggest. They have the the biggest energy savings opportunity. They're often a million kilowatt-hours a year savings. The middle schools can be 300,000 to 400,000 kilowatt-hours a year. Elementary schools could be 75,100, 125, 150,000. From a pure low-hanging fruit standpoint, you would then look and say, well, the high schools are most cost efficient, middle schools are in the middle, elementary schools are the worst. There's a reason why we don't serve all the high schools first. One is that, well, it's primarily because these lighting retrofits also improve the lighting quality, not just the efficiency, but they also improve the lighting quality and thus the learning environment. So we don't want a situation where we've helped everybody at the high school level, but we haven't helped anybody at the lower levels. So part of it has been, as we've worked our way through the school district over the last 10 years with this 12 years with this program, and served about a fifth, a little over a fifth, maybe closer to a quarter, yeah, actually, a quarter of the schools in the in the in the portion of the districts in our territory, we've served over 150 schools through through the four year, the four MOUs is the three MOUs we've completed. We've served a quarter of the schools, the 600 schools, we've served over 150. We have had a pretty even spread of serving elementary, middle, and high schools. And it's and that's primarily the reason. So if we'd start all the elementary school, all the high schools first, we'd have better cost effectiveness numbers. But we would have done nothing for the elementary school, elementary students or the the middle schools. So that's that's one thing. And then in terms of, of, you know, better resource schools being able to get to the head of the line to get better stuff, that's not a that's not a factor with direct install because it's a uniform offering. Whatever the school is, wherever the school is, the lighting menu is the lighting menu. It's replacement of lighting like this, wall packs, hall packs, same lighting measures, and some outside lighting, hallway lighting, dimmers, lighting sensors for for daylighting, things like that.
I have a clarifying question that LAUSD might need to answer, or you might be able to. But, you know, it totally makes sense in terms of the lighting retrofits. You know, there is some ancillary benefit on lighting quality, but mainly, it's not something that would be climate related. However, I'm wondering whether the utility savings that these schools will have from these energy efficiency measures, whether utilities are really handled in a central district way so that those savings are distributed, or are the savings really realized by the school where that helps their budget focus on other things? Do we know how they manage their utilities? Or does LAUSD want to answer that?
Yeah, I might might need some. I can take a stab, but I'll probably need some help from Jim on that. Okay, yeah, well, Jim, take a stab on that one.
The utilities are budgeted and allocated centrally. So any savings go back to the central.
Goes to everybody.
Distributed equitably.
That's great. Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah. There has been talk about having competitions between schools at the student level, where students could do conservation things. This wouldn't be this hardware that has to be done at a, you know, at a, at a, you know, professional installation level, but conservation type things. Or if or if a school, or if a school could demonstrate that through conservation activities, savings were being realized, there could be a sharing of savings between the students, between the school itself and headquarters.
I would say that's a I would recommend that strategy. At UCLA, we've done residence hall energy competitions and had some great success there with engagement and outreach. And we also did a University of California-wide Cool Campus Challenge, where folks were competing all across the UC system. And and it's a great way to engage folks and also have some results. So that that'd be great to see the schools engage in
Yeah.
some sort of fun competitive.
Yeah. And and that's the type of thing that we've been able to do through the educational awareness component of this program. The Heroes for Zeros that that Jim mentioned, we just handed out checks at a great event at the LA Unified Board in late May at elementary, middle, and high school, with judging that our folks participated, their folks participated in. $25,000 winners at each level, $5,000 multiple winners as well helps, you know, it has has a focus on that, too. So
Great.
there's a number of those efforts that are supported. You know, a few other thoughts. Yeah, we definitely would like to bring the the cost per school down, the savings up. So one thing we've we've we did with the commercial direct install program, which is the overarching program within which this resides, is towards the tail end of the last version of that, we piloted and ultimately integrated a set of refrigeration measures that we are now rolling into this new iteration of the LAUSD MOU. And we'll be working with, and they're not necessarily all applicable to LAUSD, but the cooler measures and the refrigeration measures certainly are. And so we hope, and we don't have the analysis yet, because we've never done this for LAUSD, and we haven't even figured out exactly which measures we're going to deploy. But the the hope is that that will introduce a suite of 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 cost-effective measures. Also, where applicable, we'll go back to schools, we've already done the lighting, and go back and just do the refrigeration measures, because they're, you know, it's a different, you know, it's a different class, different skill set. The PLA allows us to use different locals. So I believe with the refrigeration measures, we're getting into UA 250. Because we put this in the general PLA, that's fine. We'll be using UA 250. That's not a problem. So that's another thing we have coming. There's actually more measures we want to add that'll give us more opportunity to do that. Now, speaking to better better visibility into how the the schools are chosen, that's, yeah, that's where it's been a little bit opaque, very opaque. But part of that has been until this iteration, you know, we've been using this model of having having using Local 11 contractors managed by a program implementer oversee the contractors, do the DOJ screening, because it's on campus, they have to all be DOJ screened for background. That's worked fine. But what we haven't had is a direct line of sight to that implementer, you know, Willdan. It had been Lime Energy, now it's Willdan. Because we were doing this through a SCAPPA participation agreement. So we didn't actually have Willdan or Lime prior as the as the as our contractor. SCAPPA did. SCAPPA had them as the contractor. Other munis, you know, POUs could leverage that same contract. And then we could and and then we would be invoiced by by SCAPPA. But SCAPPA maintained the contract with with Willdan or Lime Energy prior. So it introduced, you know, some 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 challenges, some bureaucratic challenges in terms of line of sight directly through through the implementer to the projects, kind of made it a, you know, kind of a triangle, mostly a love triangle, sometimes a little less. But regardless, we got we got it done. But it wasn't necessarily, you know, it wasn't necessarily the 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 most transparent way of seeing exactly what was going on and when. And the other thing was, because other MOU, other munis were participating in this from here to there, now and then, every time we wanted to make a change to the contract, that, you know, to introduce new requirements that we wanted to see, it had to go to SCAPPA's board. So we had to introduce a motion through this process to SCAPPA's board to get a to get an amendment to the contract that SCAPPA held with Willdan. That's done. All that stuff is gone. That's done. Now, we have the contract with Willdan. We do an administrative amendment because things we want to see. We can restructure that. And that in turn, so now we have an MOU with 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 LAUSD, which we've long had. But we also have contractual, direct contractual control through an administrative amendment. We can execute quickly with Willdan. Where I'm going with this is it will be easier to to effect, institute, and manage to specifically and exactly the type of controls that you, I, I think this commission, I think our CEO, or really wants to see in a program, especially of this magnitude, since it's grown, it's doubled, you know, in in since since the first iteration of of the of what you've seen presented in the history here. So that's, 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 you know, about the best I can offer in for that. But if you certainly, you know, if you have more, you know, questions or specific recommendations, I'm happy to to address those as well.
I would say I'm a little concerned that, oh, sorry, my lines are on. I would say I'm a little concerned that just reporting out may not be strong enough to give us the leverage we need in this relationship to kind of reset expectations. I think the point of passing an MOU from time to time to reauthorize programs like this is that you want to learn from sort of past progress and incorporate those changes into the body of the MOU itself. I think if we're experiencing some pain points in terms of the transparency, you know, with which these sites are selected, especially if we know that, you know, cost escalation trend is going in the wrong direction, and potentially, the low-hanging fruit has been consumed in the process, then I think we would want to create more avenues for ourselves to control, or to exercise discipline in the way ratepayer money is spent. $100 million is nothing to sneeze at. Tremendous amount of money that, you know, could be a potentially large benefit to the city, to our, to the children, to, you know, future benefits like, you know, ratepayer education. But I don't I don't see based on the, based on, you know, your feedback, Mr. O'Connor, how receiving more regular reports at the board level is really going to solve. how receiving more regular reports at the board level is really going to solve some of those structural challenges for us. And I'm wondering if maybe we should basically remand this until we can get an update to the MOU language itself and how difficult that process would be. I mean, we're both giant institutions, and so sometimes renegotiating something like this can be very complex. But I'm concerned. I mean, if the spending trend is going in the wrong, and I read all the supporting documentation for this in detail and wanted to call it special, too, because I'm concerned that if the, if the trend analysis is going in the wrong direction, why would we reauthorize this program just as it is now without taking this opportunity during reauthorization to make changes that we think can help it move in the right direction? I don't know what you are all thinking, or...
I mean, I'd like to hear from the department, but to me, it seemed like something that could be addressed more at the programmatic level rather than the agreement level. But if that's not the case, please clarify. I do, I would hesitate to delay an important program like this if we feel things could be addressed not through MOU language, because I know what a very long process this has been. And I've also been there myself as a large customer, you know, working on an MOU with DWP years ago. So I would, I would say it'd be great to not have to go that route, but I'd like to hear that we can really address the concerns without changes to the MOU language.
Yeah. One thing we want to do this time around, as you probably don't see and hear, is have a specific project plan at the start of each program year. And that's one of the reasons we brought this, we're bringing it this early before the end of the, before the end of the current MOU. And one of the reasons we've tried, we would like to get it approved ASAP, because this, the current MOU ends at the end of October. This approval today, if the board, you know, so approves it, still has to go to LAUSD's board for approval. And they don't have a board meeting until August. They don't have one in July. So, you know, with that, once, so that puts us into mid-August-ish for it's actually finalized. But that still gives us two months. And so the idea was, we'd spend that time, there's a lot of close-down work happens with the old MOU, but what we would be doing is establishing a project plan for the first year of this new MOU. That would lay out what schools are we doing? And we could be scoping out in that time at least an estimate, what's the work? What's the, what's the measures? What's the potential savings? What's, what is the selection criteria? So we could come up with a plan, and we bring that plan back to this board and say, hey, this is what we've got on tap. You know, I can give you estimates. We plan to do 21 schools a year for the first, each of the first four years, and 11 in the last years. It's 95 schools. You know, we're estimating, you know, it's going to be about $842,000 per school, but that will vary widely whether it's elementary, middle, or high. But, you know, those are averages. You know, if we put a plan like this together, and as we spend, you know, two months putting this together, and we come back, say, right around the time that the current MOU expires and this new one will come together, we could have a list of these are the 21 schools we want to do. This is what we're estimating, at least, you know, maybe it's plus minus 10% or something. But it could be more along the, more, you know, tighter. That was, that's what I was thinking, that I wanted to do from a management standpoint, to have, you know, better visibility into what the plan is from a year-to-year basis. And that's what we've never had.
I think that would be really helpful. I'm interested if our ratepayer advocate feels that, you know, if you'd be open to meeting with them once they have this detailed plan together and like prior to it coming to the board, and just make sure we have that review and more detailed look at that, would that kind of satisfy your concerns, Tim?
Yeah, Mr. Jaco has presented some data that shows that the cost-effectiveness is stabilizing or even potentially decreasing as you start to institute some of these controls and feedback loops. And so I think that there's a possibility for the escalating price to, that trend to be modified based on better project management, coordination, and visibility into project selection criteria. And so we certainly think that, and that's why we didn't recommend tabling this measure. I think that if this were to slip past the, past the MOU date, then you're missing opportunity to be creating benefits to reduce energy and to benefit the students of LAUSD in those co-benefits categories. So I think that those are safeguards that would certainly give OPA some significant breathing room on this one.
Thank you. Commissioner McGraw, would that address your concerns, this approach of having a more detailed plan brought to us?
I'm curious about the MOU language more specifically, and if we have the discretion in the MOU, if there's a disagreement with the district about which schools to prioritize, or once we start installing in schools, if some new information comes to light and we want them to change tack, if we have the discretion inside the MOU language to redirect them? Or if, basically how the financial flow happens and how much control we have once the MOU is signed over project selection?
Yeah, well, all the elements of the MOU are the same. They're all up-tos. You know, there's no commitment that every dollar in this MOU is going to be spent the day we sign it.
Can I ask a question quickly, just to make sure we're all on the same page? The biggest part of this contract, the direct install, right? And that is performance-based. Willdan has to perform on savings attained. That is a measure of performance that should be equated to cost-effectiveness, because otherwise they don't get paid if they don't achieve the savings.
Exactly.
Are we concerned about the rest of the contract not having the same measurement?
Yeah, what is the...
I just want to make sure that we have the right metrics, because I think that the biggest number is already in the CDI contract with Willdan on performance-based.
Yes, I definitely see that in terms of direct install. And I really appreciate that that third party is sort of bound by those performance metrics. That's very helpful. But I think understanding, basically, I'm trying to figure out how, within the scope of the MOU, we, as a department, can find the leverage we need to reset that relationship and make sure we have enough visibility into program selection so that the performance-based metrics and the other parts of the program continue to trend or start trending in the right direction. And if we've identified the current pain point is the lack of sort of transparency and really our lack of decision oversight over, you know, over which schools exactly are selected, I'm wondering, like, is there something in the MOU that gives us the, gives us the leverage or the ability we need to start to engage in that process meaningfully? Or is there something about the way the MOU is written that allows them currently to make those decisions without much input from us? If we don't amend the MOU, you know, depending on what the mechanics of the actual language of the MOU are, you know, could LAUSD continue to just, you know, spend our money up to a certain amount on projects that we disagree with them, maybe helpful in reaching our sort of intended impact? Does that make sense? Like, I appreciate that we're going to get together and, you know, figure this out and reset the relationship. But I'm wondering, when it comes to like the language in the MOU, who really has the discretion? And, you know, do we share that discretion? Do they have final say over project selection? Do we, if the project hasn't been, if that process hasn't been collaborative to date, what's going to make it collaborative in the MOU?
Great. Ashley from my team has a response. Thanks, Ashley. More information for you.
Welcome. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Ashlyn Agretti. I'm a utility services manager. I work under David Jaco, as he said. I am responsible for managing the program. And to answer your question, yes. For the other strategies, what we do is we work collaboratively with the district, and we talk about the projects, and we set metrics for those projects individually. We have the opportunity to determine how we want to do this, whether it's equitably, geographically, based on those decisions and the needs that we have, supporting the department's desires. So yes, the MOU does have that language that allows us to do that, and we do it at, for those other three strategies, at the specific project level.
Yeah. And actually, reviewing the detailed MOU language, it does, it actually indicates that we will coordinate. So LADWP and LAUSD will coordinate on the location of the install. It also says LADWP and LAUSD will jointly coordinate through the direct install program, et cetera. So it seems like it is written in there, and now we just need to make sure we're following that language of the MOU in this manner. So thank you for raising that, Commissioner McGraw.
Correct.
Thank you.
It does. Thank you.
All right.
Everybody's happy?
Yeah. I'm going to make a motion to approve item 04.
With the stipulation that we get that report at the board...
With the follow-up report and more detailed plan, which we're really looking forward to seeing. This is exciting for our region.
Before the term of the next MOU begins in October.
Yes, please.
Correct. Or in November.
Seconded.
Item 4 is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Tim, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. President, Vice President, thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving right along.
And good luck with the LAUSD board approval. Thank you.
Mia can come back now. Heather, we miss her. Where are we? Management reports?
President Katz, can we address item 07, please?
Who's 7? Sure.
This was me.
But this is the diving...
This is the heat treatment welding.
The welding, yeah.
The welding services.
No, I'm glad you called that out, actually, because as I was looking through this, the materials, you know, this was originally a stopgap contract. A really long stopgap contract. And I'm just wondering, as, the point you raised, George, was, why aren't we just hiring these guys if we need them this often? And, you know...
Yeah, I mean, heat treatment for welding seems kind of basic to what we do. And obviously, this is a five-year contract that would replace a stopgap PO, and we're just trying to understand, you know, why we don't have that capacity internally, and if we're going to approve a five-year contract, what we're doing to develop that capacity internally. And could you give us an understanding of sort of like, I mean, this is, it's a big contract amount, it's $5 million, so we must be doing a lot of welding. How much, where are we doing it? Any sort of background you could give? And you may use the presentation, or you can just answer if you like.
Understood. First of all, thank you, Commissioners. Good afternoon, executive management. So this, the stopgap may confuse things a little bit. We've used heat treatment services for at least 20-plus years, and our latest five-year contract expired in April. So by then, we were quite advanced into the RFP and award process, and we didn't want to have a gap in the contract. So we were able to issue GM-awarded $150,000 for no more than six months stopgap while we got this contract on the board. I hope that answers the whole stopgap thing.
Yes, thank you.
So as far as contracting this versus in-house, there's five main reasons why it's been contracted out. One, training, we don't have the equipment, that's the second. Third reason, we believe it's, it would be difficult to keep, because of the intermittent aspect of this, when it's used, is used a lot. Double shifts, probably two, three plants at a time, because the outages are around the same time. Nonetheless, when it's not used, it's unused for months and big portions of the year. So we do not necessarily know if there's a classification that could take on this type of work. If that's the case, you know, it could be looked into. But at this point, I don't think there's any classifications that technically do this. And if that was going to be the case, the fifth aspect of this is the certificates that come with heat treatment services.
Could you go into the difference between heat treating and welding?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave. So during these repairs at the January stations, the first things that we do is identify the common failure points in the high-energy piping or pressure vessels. And then we do non-destructive examination. After the non-destructive examination, then our welders prepare the sections of pipe. Once it's prepared, heat treatment services comes in, and they do a preheating of the pipe to make sure that all the molecular structure of the metals align. They go through that process, then they work with our welders, which in-house, we do the welding. Once it's welded, then they do a postheat treatment. And then non-destructive examination comes back, they do their homework to make sure that the weld is fine. And that's basically the process. I guess they do some postheat welding, too, right?
So essentially, we do this on the submarine as well. Essentially, if you have something that's hardened, think of it like glass, you're heating it up to reduce that pressure and soften it. You do your welding, and then you restore the hardness by the heat treatment post-weld.
It's usually done by materials engineers to ensure that the structural composition of the metal is ready for our weld.
Yeah. It's not going to break down in there?
We will, if I have anything to say about it, sir.
Thank you.
So have we always had people, we've always had somebody outside do the heat treatment?
Yes, we have. And the...
Most people do.
Yeah. I was going to say, this seems to me, maybe, maybe I'm just getting blurry, but we do most of it with our welding. That's our right hand.
Correct.
Again, back to my analogy about we're trying to get a clap going. We need the heat treatment to come with the welding to get the clap done, to do our work. So we need the heat treatment contract.
Yes, yes. And the bulk of the labor is done internally through our welders.
It's actually high-risk.
It's high-risk as well.
Yeah. If you don't do it right, this is your point of failure, right? And so it's so important for our welders that somebody that's certified to do heat treatment does it before the welders do welding.
No, I'm not suggesting that we don't do it. I think it's really important. I'm just suggesting that maybe we should have people certified to do that work.
Well, the equipment is specialized in certifications, and I think the critical aspect of it is like either you include this in a DDR or you create a new DDR.
Sure. I mean, listen, we do a lot of specialized work internally that's high-risk. It's not like we only use external contracts for that. I'm curious, in the NOC process for this contract, if there was a discussion with labor about, often in the NOC process, there's some discussion about, you know, bringing some of this internal over time, or other things they want to do to compensate for a new contract? Or sometimes labor's just like, you know, we're good with this, we know, we know we need external help, and so NOC approved. Can you give me some background on this one?
On this one, I believe it was the latter.
It was the latter.
Yes.
Excellent.
Well, I have no unreadiness with this. It seems to make sense to me as it's presented.
Yeah, I appreciate all the clarifications.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, we didn't...
Tanisha.
Tanisha, do you want to add to that?
Good afternoon. Tanisha Smith, Director, Supply Chain Services. Looks like you guys cleared it up with regards to the stopgap. So I just wanted to clarify. And I stood up and you hit, so I just wanted to say hi.
Hi, Tanisha. Thank you.
You came all the way up here, I wanted to let you say hi.
Okay, well, motion to approve number seven.
Without objection, all members present, vote in second. Number seven is approved, 5-0. All right, Chanté, what else I got?
Management reports, there are none. Reports from Commissioners on committee activity, and then filed items.
President Katz, can I have a minute? Or John, can John have a minute?
Janice can have a minute. Does one take a minute?
Yeah, we can take a minute.
I'll take the minute. As you know, we recently did a search, and so we selected a new Executive Director of Security Services. He's in the audience. I just wanted to take a minute to introduce him to the Commissioners. His name is Daniel Lucero, just started yesterday.
Welcome, Daniel.
Welcome aboard, and congratulations. We look forward to working with you.
Hey, Daniel, can you come up for him and talk about your background, please?
Commissioners, board, guests, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm incredibly humbled and excited for this. I'm a West Point graduate, got my undergrad, did 15 years in the Army, not the Marines. I retired as a major. My specialty within the Army was Military Police Corps. I had the very humbling opportunity to lead the largest MP company in the Army. I came here, I got my MPA from USC. I actually studied with a couple of, sir, a couple of your former colleagues and familiar with your work as well. Additionally, I got certificates in sustainability and public policy, and from grad school, I'm coming to DWP. So my philosophy is that security is a team sport. It goes... Additionally, I got certificates in sustainability and public policy. And from grad school, I'm coming to DWP. So my philosophy is that security is a team sport. It goes up, down, left and right. Our function exists to serve ultimately the people, because leadership is about service. But it's about protecting the operations, the assets, the employees, the personnel, and very, very familiar and cognizant of a lot of the big events that are coming to our city. And so myself and my team, we look forward to working with you all to make sure that our customers, our city, our guests have safe and reliable access to resources and services. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service as well. All branches are welcome.
We have them all.
We're glad to have you. And we have a Vets employee group that you may have already been informed of and folks from all different areas. But yeah, glad to have your extensive expertise and background joining our team and really look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Katz, is this a physical security position? Not cyber and IT, correct?
Correct. Physical security. So he'll be over our Office of Special Investigation, our Uniform Security, and helping us improve our physical security of our critical infrastructure.
And we do have a CISO under IT.
Of course.
And they'll be working together.
Okay.
Yeah.
This actually, this grew out of all of our experience, starting with, it's been going on for a while, but the fires also indicated the need for security for all of our personnel who are working in the field at various times and upgrading the security. John made the recommendations about, you know, how do we broaden the security for, to make sure our employees are fully protected. That's, that was the impetus for it.
At some point, we learn a little bit more, sort of, given the big events that are coming, as you mentioned, that, you know, we're proper, we're prepared and that we understand better, sort of, some of us understand better what, how that's going down, you're getting organized around. Eighty, no, yes.
Absolutely, ma'am. Ultimately, security is based on threat, and threat is based on intelligence. And so to Mr. O'Connor's point, we'll be working very closely with cyber, with emergency management, with safety. Security is a holistic perspective, or it should be at least. And so this isn't even just internal, but obviously, working with LA 28, we're working with the World Cup. I have some connections with LAPD as well. But ultimately, we're all on the same team, and we all want to see a seamless integration of services. And I look forward to, you know, answering any questions that you have and ensuring that we protect our operations and personnel.
Yeah, and for LA 28, I'll just note that that's also very much a multi-agency effort. The FBI is kind of one of the lead agencies there as well and part of the Games Water Council and Energy Councils.
Yes, yes. We actually have a meeting on Thursday that I'll be attending with them, so.
Yeah, excellent, thanks.
Given the extent of critical infrastructure at the utility and the relevance of that critical infrastructure for maintaining reliable, you know, power and water service and the cost to ratepayers for not doing so, have you had the chance to review any of the physical security plans or, you know, critical infrastructure security plans already? And do you, have you been developing? And today's your first day.
Second day.
Oh, yeah, it should be done already.
That's a part of your process for, you know, bringing security, you know, as a holistic sport to the utility?
Absolutely. I haven't had that chance yet, but that is very high on my agenda. I, my first master's degree is in security management, and I wrote my thesis on critical infrastructure. That was back in '17, so some things have changed since then, but some remain the same. And specifically, I'll be looking at our organization, working with water, power, maintenance, operations, engineering. We'll be going through all of those and making sure that as we lead up to those, we're asking the right questions, we're looking at the right design and the right mitigation measures as well.
And Tim, I'll just add, when we hired Daniel, we had a lot of applicants to the job. And we went through, I don't even know how many resumes. 230 applicants for the job. And at the end, we downgraded, like, selected the top eight.
Ten, and we reduced it to eight, yes.
And then reduced it to eight. And one of the biggest things that I saw, that we saw on his interview was that he actually went to one of our facilities and made a security assessment for his interview and identified the gaps on the security aspect of it. And so just having that forward-thinking was just really impressive to see. So highly competitive. You're from Los Angeles, you're local here, and very connected to the local community. So we're happy to have him.
Great.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Last item we have, before we go close session.
Trojan, right?
Is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Let's take a motion in a second on that, please. And without objection, all five members being recorded as I votes.
Motion to approve previous meeting minutes.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else, Chanté?
No neighborhood impacts were provided to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners. That's all.
Thank you. Ben, the measure of words.
The Board shall publicly report any action taken in closed session and the vote or abstention of every member present thereon in accordance with Section 54957.1 of the California Government Code.
All right.
Thank you.
I think we will adjourn to recess due to closed session. Report out afterwards. But thank you all for coming today.
Thank you. We're reporting back results of the closed session. O1, Gomez v. LADWP, Los Angeles Superior Court, case number 24STCV08503. This was an auto accident case where a department vehicle hit a motorized bicycle. The settlement amount is $137,500 and that all five commissioners voted in favor of the settlement. O2, which is Watson v. City of Los Angeles, Los Angeles Superior Court, Los Angeles County Superior Court, case number 24CMCV00472. This was a step and fall on an LADWP water meter box near 815 East 118th Street. The settlement amount is $150,000. All five commissioners voted in favor of the settlement. And then O3, which is Meredith v. LADWP, claim number 2018-0185 and WCAB, case number This is a workers' compensation case. The settlement amount is $1,100,000 and all five commissioners were in favor, voted in favor of that settlement as well. And that concludes our closed session.
Just one small note, the numbers are P1, P2, and P3 for those items.
Oh, I apologize.
Sorry, I think it may have been amended from originally being though. All right, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that, yes. Meeting's adjourned.